Good evening and welcome to NTD News. I'm Stephanie Cox. Here are today's top stories. Around 15 Republican senators called on Biden today to clearly stand behind Israel. This as some Democrats avoid the topic and some progressives push their anti-Israel rhetoric. The White House now pressured to clarify comments that seem to oppose the Abraham Accords. The House of Representatives will vote to establish a commission to further investigate the events of January 6th at the U.S. Capitol. But is there enough support from the Senate to actually make it law? Biden is lifting sanctions on the company behind Russia's Nord Stream 2 pipeline. What does this mean for Europe's energy security? And what are the implications of such a move after Biden shut down an American pipeline? And customs agents seize nearly $700,000 in counterfeit currency in Chicago. All the fake money originates from China and it's not the first time this has happened. President Biden delivered his first commencement address since he took office in January. In his graduation speech, the U.S. Coast Guard Academy, he says the Coast Guards are playing an important role, especially in changing a challenging world.
President Biden spoke Wednesday to 240 graduates of the U.S. Coast Guard Academy in New London, Connecticut. He stressed the Coast Guards are playing an important role in responding to the pandemic and disasters like storms, wildfires, and flooding.
The world is changing. We need you even more.
Biden said U.S. Coast Guards are vital to economic, environmental, and national security. More than one quarter of the U.S. GDP is transported through the waters. The U.S. and its partners have developed clear rules of road behavior.
But as you know, increasingly, we're seeing those rules challenged, both by the rapid advance of technology and the disruptive actions of nations like China and Russia.
Biden said the mission of U.S. Coast Guards is becoming more global and more important.
Class of 2021, it's time for you to go out and be the future, to make the future.
This is the second time that Biden delivered a commencement address to the U.S. Coast Guard Academy. He also addressed the academy's 2013 class when he was vice president.
Three Republican House members are down $500 each in fines for not wearing masks, and several more have been warned. They're protesting the mask mandate, saying the House should comply with the most current CDC guidance.
A group of Republican lawmakers took off their masks on the House floor Tuesday. They argue that the chamber's mask mandate needs to be updated in light of new CDC guidance. Three were issued a $500 fine apiece. At least eight other members were issued warnings. Further violations could lead to $2,500 fines. Representative Brian Mast said it is the best $500 he ever spent. He tweeted, "This was never about science. It has always been about power." Representative Ralph Norman's office told NTD after receiving the warning, the congressman appeared to be maskless on the floor Wednesday. Despite the CDC's announcement last week, the Capitol physician insists everyone on the floor wear masks until all members are fully vaccinated. House Republicans are also urging Speaker Nancy Pelosi to end proxy voting and virtual committee hearings. Lynn Lynn, NTD News.
And today, House Minority Leader Kevin McCarthy introduced a resolution to change the House floor's mask rules. The GOP-backed effort says the House mask mandate sends the erroneous messages that the efficacy of the vaccines cannot be trusted. And earlier today, Congress members debated whether to further investigate the events of January 6th at the U.S. Capitol. They're currently casting votes on whether to establish a new commission for the probe. NTD Steve Lance brings us more from Washington.
A vote is expected to be cast on Wednesday by House Democrats to establish a commission to further investigate the so-called insurrection that took place on January 6th. Some say that this event has been politicized and that the events that took place on that day were a one-off and not worthy of wasting any more government resources funded by American taxpayers.
It's not at all clear what new facts or additional investigation, yet another commission, could actually lay on top of existing efforts by law enforcement and Congress.
In response to Leader McConnell's announcement that he would not be supporting this commission, and just prior to the House vote, Nancy Pelosi held a press conference calling on Congress for their support.
Congress has a clear and urgent responsibility to come to the truth of what happened and to ensure that this can never happen again.
Former President Trump issued a statement on Tuesday accusing the Democrats of hypocrisy by excusing the political violence that has played out in cities throughout the U.S., saying in part, "It is just more partisan unfairness, and unless the murders, riots, and firebombings in Portland, Minneapolis, Seattle, Chicago, and New York are also going to be studied, this discussion should be ended immediately." Even with enough votes in the House, without the support of Mitch McConnell and other Republican senators, it is unlikely that this commission will be moving forward. Steve Lance, NTD News, Washington, D.C.
Over the last year, children have suffered because of lockdowns and pandemic restrictions. Now, we hear from the children themselves on the toll these measures have taken. One 10-year-old boy's speech against his school's mask mandates is going viral. Here's what he had to say.
10-year-old John is from Felix A. Williams Elementary School in Florida. He's gone viral over a powerful speech he gave during a local school board meeting last week. He shared what it's like to be forced to wear a mask in school, seven hours a day, five days a week.
I love my school and all, but my teachers seem really stressed, and that makes me feel bad. One teacher walks around with a clipboard full of referrals for any student whose mask isn't on properly. It makes me feel scared. That same teacher yells at us having our masks down to drink water while we are outside in car line. She told us we had to wait until we were in our parents' car to have a drink of water. She had her mask down the entire time while she was yelling at us, which makes me and all my friends very mad.
When John saw his teacher outside of school, he says she couldn't recognize him because she's never seen him without a mask on.
I have allergies, and I feel really anxious with my face covered. I miss seeing people's face. I miss the way things used to be. I'm scared they'll never go back to normal. Breathing freely doesn't seem like something we should have to ask any other people for permission for. Please make masks optional today. It would be so awesome to end the school year on a really happy note like that. Thank you for your time.
John's speech went viral, and it landed him a spot on Fox's Tucker Carlson Tonight on Tuesday evening. But despite John's appeal, the school board voted to keep the masks mandatory for the 12 remaining days of the current school year. Other children are speaking out from under the masks, too. This young student from Orange County, California, gave a speech at a protest against school mask mandates on Monday. The video was captured by YouTuber Anomaly, who was at the event.
There's teachers there that yell at me every day for having my mask over my nose. We go to P.E., we do basketball and soccer, and we run around, and they're still yelling at us for having our masks under our nose or down. I feel like I'm gonna pass out sometimes because I can't breathe. I can't feel like, I can't just breathe at all. It gets me hot.
And just like John, one aspect of the mask she finds most upsetting is being unable to see her friends' faces.
I used to see people smiling, like, I used to see my friends smile. I used to see them be happy every day. Everyone's like, just, I feel like it's depressing, very sad.
The momentum to get masks off children is growing across the country. Many other students, parents, and child healthcare professionals are saying no more to the mask. Reporting by Grace Coulter, NTD News.
A group of young men in New York City have been caught in a ring of unemployment fraud. They stole over $2 million of unemployment benefit money. They were caught with over 100 debit cards, all with different names. NTD's Jason Perry has the story.
Eight men between the ages of 18 and 25 were charged for fraudulently collecting $2 million in pandemic relief funds. Six of the eight were arrested and appeared in court on Tuesday. Two are still at large. In a span of about a year, prosecutors say the suspects were opening unemployment insurance claims under different names, but using their own addresses and phone numbers. They also had the unemployment funds deposited into their own personal bank accounts, and they would go to local ATMs to withdraw the funds. One suspect's address was used for 50 different unemployment claims. Robert Siciliano is the CEO of Protect Now LLC, a personal and cyber protection group. He explained how the Department of Labor could miss something like this.
So unfortunately, due to the pandemic, fraud like this is highly likely because of the volume of claims that occur in such a very short period of time.
At least four of the men posted photos of themselves posing with large stacks of money on social media. These posts are now part of the federal court documents.
It's supposed to make them look cool and look good and all that stuff. And while that, you know, may be a part of, you know, their thought process, it certainly incriminated them.
Siciliano says to avoid identity theft, people should get a credit freeze for free. A credit freeze restricts access to your credit report. This means nobody will be able to open a new credit account while this lock is in place. But if you need to apply for new credit, you can temporarily lift the freeze.
Now, while a credit freeze would not prevent unemployment fraud, it would prevent a bad guy from opening up a new line of credit, like a credit card, getting a loan, and so forth.
As long as the victim identifies the fraud and reports it to the state, Siciliano says the issue will be resolved. Jason Perry, NTD News.
A new Texas law passed today will ban doctors from giving abortions if fetal heartbeat is detected. Here's the governor before signing the bill into law.
Our Creator endowed us with the right to life, and yet millions of children lose their right to life every year because of abortion. In Texas, we work to save those lives.
The law also gives Texans the right to sue doctors who perform illegal abortions. Government data shows that over 50,000 abortions were performed in Texas last year. Abortion provider Planned Parenthood says the law bans abortions before most women know they're pregnant, calling it dangerous. A senator who authored the Heartbeat Act says it will stand as a model for the country. And the Biden administration is lifting sanctions on Russia's Nord Stream 2 pipeline. U.S. officials say it's to strengthen ties with Germany, but there are consequences. NTD's Kevin Hogan brings us more.
Germany has confirmed the U.S. lifted sanctions regarding Nord Stream 2 pipeline, including the Russian state-owned company overseeing the project and its CEO. The controversial project allows additional natural gas to flow from Russia to Germany. The German foreign minister is pleased with the decision.
We see this as a constructive step, which we are happy to further discuss with our partners in Washington.
Proponents of the pipeline argue it's a key investment for the security of Germany's energy supply, but critics see it as an environmental, geopolitical, and security risk. The U.S. asserts the pipeline will increase Europe's reliance on Russia and that it will endanger the continent's security. That's because Russia has allegedly been interfering with Western democracies, being aggressive in Eastern Europe, and supporting Syrian President Bashar al-Assad. The Wall Street Journal's editorial board calls the lifting of the sanctions Biden's gift to Russian President Vladimir Putin. The board points to a potential hypocrisy, that is Biden shutting down the American Keystone XL pipeline while greenlighting Russia's Nord Stream. The board writes, "Biden is treating a pipeline that increases Russian influence and income better than one that enhances America's." Former President Donald Trump approved sanctions on any firm that helped the Russian state-owned gas company finish the pipeline. That was in December 2019. On Wednesday, a source told Reuters, "The State Department's review concluded that the company and its CEO committed sanctionable offenses, but it was in the U.S.'s national interests to waive the sanctions. It's so the U.S. can send a signal to Germany that it is committed to strengthening relations with Germany. The prior sanctions had delayed the project and put its completion at risk. Now, the company says the pipeline is 95% complete with around 75 miles to go." Kevin Hogan, NTD News.
The United States is delaying a ban on trading Chinese stocks that have ties to the Chinese military. The new restrictions will take effect on June 11th, two weeks after the original date. The original investment ban was signed by President Trump last November. The Biden administration is extending the grace period for investors to comply. A senior official said that the administration remains deeply concerned about this issue. It seeks to craft a stronger policy to prohibit U.S. investment in Chinese military, intelligence, and other security apparatuses. At least eight Chinese companies have been restricted, but one of them, cellphone maker Xiaomi, filed a lawsuit in response. The Defense Department agreed to remove it from the list last week. And Customs and Border Protection in Chicago recently found a total of $685,000 in several shipments from China, but it's all counterfeit. The shipments arrived at Chicago's International Mail Facility. The fake currencies came in from, in the form of $5, $10, $20, $50, and $100 bills. But the fake money seized by agents in Chicago was hardly an isolated incident. On April 23rd, CBP officers in the city said they seized 281 shipments with counterfeit bills and coins at the same facility. 95% of these shipments came from China. China remains the top source of fake goods entering the U.S. market. The Assistant Area Port Director for Chicago said that counterfeiting is often used to finance illegal activities like human trafficking, drugs, and terrorism. And more rockets launched against Israel today from Hamas and other Palestinian groups in Lebanon. The Israeli military is striking targets in Lebanon in response, this while they're continuing with military operations in Gaza. NTD's Allison Lee has more.
Here, here's a new launch. We can see it. It's coming up. It's coming up.
NTD's Israeli reporter Eli Wartman obtained footage of rockets launched against Israel on Tuesday night. As conflicts continue into the 10th day, Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu says there are only two ways to deal with the Hamas terrorist group: either conquer them or deter them.
We are engaged right now in forceful deterrence, but I have to say, we don't rule out anything. We hope we can restore quiet. We hope we can restore it quickly. I want to say that we're doing that while doing our utmost to avoid civilian casualties.
Israel's Iron Dome Missile Defense System was able to intercept one of the four rockets launched from Lebanon Wednesday afternoon. The other three landed in unpopulated areas and caused no injuries. Israel responded by returning fire at Lebanese targets where the rockets were launched. Netanyahu explains what the Israeli military is trying to do.
We try to target those who target us with great precision. There is no army in the world that does more than the Israeli army and the Israeli security services and Israeli intelligence to prevent collateral damage.
The ongoing conflict started last Monday when Hamas launched rocket attacks against civilian targets in Jerusalem. The Israeli military says terrorist groups in Gaza have fired 4,000 rockets against Israel in the past 10 days. 12 civilians in Israel and over 200 Palestinians died in the conflict. The Israeli military was able to wipe out over 130 terrorists, including an Islamic Jihad commander, and strike over 800 terror targets as of Monday.
If the perception is that they gained a victory, that is a defeat for all of us. When I say "all of us," it's for all the democracies. It's for all those governments that seek peace. It's for all those in the Middle East.
On Tuesday, the Israeli military launched a fresh round of strikes against Hamas underground terror tunnel in Gaza. Israeli airstrikes destroyed over nine miles of the terrorist group's weapons storage facilities. Gaza residents say they got advance warning phone calls from Israeli agencies asking them to evacuate before airstrikes. Meanwhile, Netanyahu says Israel does not plan on ending military operations in Gaza.
Biden has yet to give a clear signal about Israel. Wednesday on Capitol Hill, Senator Ted Cruz led 15 Republican senators in calling Biden to stand with Israel. They fear Biden is afraid to go against the progressive wing of his party, who are blaming Israel for the violence. NTD's Malina Weiscup has more from Capitol Hill.
These Republican senators want Biden to clearly show his stance on Israel and show that America solidly stands as Israel's ally. Senator Tom Cotton in particular is saying he's concerned that Biden's actions this week are showing that he's aligning more and more with the progressive wing of the Democratic Party.
He started out by saying he supports Israel's right to defend itself. Then it became he supports a ceasefire. Then his aide said, well, he talked really tough to Benjamin Netanyahu.
Biden told Israel's Prime Minister on a call Wednesday that he expects a significant de-escalation to cease fire. Other Democrats who have been supportive of Israel in the past are now rather silent, such as Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer. Senator Cruz says a reporter told him that Schumer didn't want to talk about Israel.
I bet he doesn't because he's so scared of AOC primaring him from the left that he doesn't want to say anything to anger the anti-Israel extreme left in the Democratic Party.
On Wednesday, Representatives Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, Mark Pocan, and Rashida Tlaib introduced a resolution to block a $735 million sale of weapons to Israel. It looks like this progressive wing is influencing other Democrats. Senator Schumer, along with six other Democrat lawmakers who opposed the Iran nuclear deal in the past, are now on the other side of the fence. Schumer says he doesn't see any reason to withdraw from the Iran nuclear deal. Meanwhile, Senate Republicans are warning that the U.S. deal with Iran is actually helping fund the Hamas terrorists right now.
And in what ways are we legitimizing, or in some cases even funding, Hamas? It also raises important questions as to why on earth the Biden administration would ever want to legitimize Hamas's sponsor, the regime in Iran?
And Senator Bill Hagerty didn't join the group of Republican senators here today. Instead, he sent a letter to the White House asking for clarification on President Biden's stance on the Abraham Accords. The Abraham Accords was a deal made under Trump, which normalized relations between countries in the Middle East. And many advisors to Biden do say they support the Abraham Accords, but when asked about it earlier this week, White House Press Secretary Jen Psaki said that they do not plan to follow the tactics of the previous administration.
That we are not following the same tactics of the prior administration.
That's why Senator Hagerty now wants clarification on this, because he says if these comments are not corrected, it could embolden those who seek violence over peace. Reporting in Washington, D.C., Malina Weiscup, NTD News.
President Biden is reiterating his calls for a ceasefire between Israel and Palestine, but a former mayor in Israel says the country won't bow to pressure from extremists in the Middle East or from any global body sympathetic towards the terrorists. Here are the details.
According to the White House, Biden told Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu on Wednesday that he expects a significant de-escalation of violence between Israel and Palestine militants on the path to a ceasefire. And America is not the only country pressuring Israel to put down its weapons. The nation is facing pressure from countries and global bodies all across the world. Even Russia and the Chinese regime have given their two cents.
You don't get anywhere by appeasing. You have to speak the truth, and hopefully the truth will win out if you hold by your principles.
David Rubin is a former mayor of Shiloh, Israel, and author. He spoke with NTD from his home in Jerusalem. In a world where governance and decision-making is becoming increasingly globalized, Rubin says you have to hold on to your principles as a country. This, he says, is what Israel does.
The world becoming a global world doesn't mean that decisions have to be made globally. Decisions have to be based on right and wrong. Okay? Morality is not based on technology. Morality is based on truth. It's based on right and wrong. The use of human shields is morally wrong. And I don't care whether the U.N. comes here to visit us and put pressure on us, or the European Union, or any other individual countries come and arrogantly tell us what needs to be done. If it's wrong, it's wrong.
Rubin says Israel leads and makes its decisions based on the laws of morality given by God, noting that God imparted the Ten Commandments in Israel.
So when, when the radical left comes to put pressure on us, and when the extremists in the Islamic world put pressure on us, so we have the right to say no. And we're going to continue to say no, and we will defend our own interests and our own understanding of right and wrong.
He says terrorist organizations and countries like Iran see the Biden administration's moves in the Middle East as a sign of weakness. He says that by appearing weak, America has lost its influence in the region. As long as Hamas keeps attacking Israel, a ceasefire is out of the question, according to Rubin. And Israel will keep defending itself and acting in accordance with the moral laws it follows as a nation.
Justice reform advocates are saying New York's parole system is rife with error, even doing the opposite of what it's meant to do. They held a roundtable to get on top of the issue. NTD's Don Tran has the details.
The parole system is seen as a way to bring people from incarceration back into society safely and permanently. But in New York, several experts on the justice system say the state's parole system is broken.
What we have is a system that has turned into a reincarceration machine, largely for non-criminal offenses, so-called technical violations. In fact, about 80% of parolees who are returned to incarceration are returned for non-criminal technical violations, a blistering rate.
And for a system that's supposedly doing a poor job, it's also costly from a financial and human standpoint. It costs taxpayers up to $600 million a year on technical violations alone. People under parole say they have a difficult time rebuilding their lives. One formerly incarcerated woman shares her experience.
I have a 17-year-old young woman, and, you know, her birthday's coming up, and I'm, can't, the parole officer did not grant me permission to go with her to Miami for her 18th birthday, right? I have missed so many other birthdays, so you know, when you're 18, this is very special, especially if you want to spend it with your mother. It's unfortunate, and this is the life, the world that we live in when you're on parole.
One of the panelists is proposing that New York should look to other states on how they reform their parole system. For instance, North Carolina swapped technical violations with escalating penalties, which don't bring people straight back to prison.
A New Jersey university is caring for more than 800 baby turtles rescued from storm drains. NTD Sapphire Quarter has the details.
These delightful northern Diamondback terrapins are being given another chance after rescuers found them, most likely doomed to die in storm drains. The youngsters come to the surface when the weather warms up. The turtles begin travel to a tidal creek or back bay area. The quarter-sized terrapins look like a good snack to a hungry predator. If the eggs are laid near a curb, that's not the only danger.
The youngsters fall into the street. They're too small to get back up over the curb, so they basically just follow the curb along, unfortunately, until they come to a storm drain and fall in.
New Jersey residents began noticing the turtles in the drains and set out to rescue them. They created special nets to scoop up the youngsters. Unfortunately, not all the turtles could be set free.
It's not the best order to be in because oil from cars and everything runs into the storm drain, so a lot of times they come in with lions, neptuns, and things like that.
Over 800 baby turtles have been brought to Stockton University for care in 2021. After about a year, they'll be released back into the wild. Stockton says a terrapin raised with them is two to three times larger than its wild counterpart. Unfortunately, the vivarium has reached its capacity. Ricotta says, "If you find a terrapin hatchling in need of help, place it in a container of room-temperature water. If it seems healthy, it can be released into a tidal creek or bay at dusk." Sapphire Quarter, NTD News.
Still to come, real estate heir Robert Durst's murder trial resumes in Los Angeles, though the prosecutor argues that this isn't the first killing Durst is responsible for. If you're near the Golden Gate Bridge on a windy day, you might just catch it humming. Some say they enjoy it, while others don't. That and more on NTD News.
This is such a gentle painting, so beautifully portrayed.
A group of people reading together in this simple, everyday-looking living room. A young girl reading along with an adult, a grandparent sitting in the lotus position, a businessman in his typical suit.
You see all those people, they look like they have quietly settled down there. And you, as a viewer, it looks like you've just stepped in the door.
You can't see what it is they're reading, so you're a little bit curious, and you're kind of invited to walk in.
This harmonious feeling is not by accident. It is the very subject of the work. The book they are reading is the main text of Falun Gong, which is an ancient Chinese spiritual discipline in the Buddhist tradition. At the core of Falun Gong are the values of truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance. Unfortunately, the practice is banned in China, where the artist resides. Thousands have been killed for their faith. Golden energy blooms into the room as a result of their steadfast faith. The painting on the back wall reminds us of this work's title, "Plum Blossoms in a Muddy World."
It's also a metaphor for the practitioners that are sitting in the room as plum blossoms.
They signify perseverance and hope. They signify perseverance and hope that all brutal winters end, and life is renewed once again.
Multi-millionaire real estate heir Robert Durst's murder trial has resumed in Los Angeles after a 14-month delay. Prosecutors say Durst's own testimony holds the key to the verdict. NTD's Andrew Thomas has the story.
You all know who Robert Durst is.
A prosecutor in California says the words of multimillionaire Robert Durst will help jurors convict him of murdering Susan Berman.
We know that whoever that killer was wanted Susan's body to be found. How do we know? Because the killer left a note, what's been commonly referred to as the cadaver note, and that was mailed to the Beverly Hills Police Department.
He's also a suspect in the 1982 disappearance of his wife Kathleen.
And we're going to show that he did that with the motive and because she was a witness. And by witness, meaning that she assisted him in covering up the killing of his wife almost 20 years earlier.
Deputy District Attorney John Lewin told jurors Tuesday that some of the most damning testimony in the case will come from Durst's own statements made to police and documentary filmmakers.
This is what happens.
All right, this is the bear. There it is, your score.
This is not the first time Durst has been on trial for murder. He was acquitted in 2003 after confessing to killing his neighbor in Texas.
Finally, we're going to show that Robert Durst killed, dismembered, and dumped Morris Black's corpse, his body parts, in trash bags into Galveston Bay in September of 2001. So it's going to be three killings that we are going to prove.
Lawyers are presenting a new round of opening statements in Los Angeles County Superior Court. That's after a 14-month recess in the case, delayed because of the pandemic. Durst has pleaded not guilty to killing his best friend, Susan Berman, in 2000 at her Los Angeles home. Andrew Thomas, NTD News.
The show isn't over till the Golden Gate sings. After a safety railing was installed, the iconic bridge started humming throughout the city. NTD's Jason Blair has the details.
Some San Francisco residents are tired of the Golden Gate Bridge singing. Some people say it sounds pleasant and meditative. Some say it sounds eerie, and some people think, well, it's rather annoying. But whatever the case may be, officials aren't giving any signs that it's going away anytime soon. The humming sound started last June after a $12 million safety railing was installed on the bridge's sidewalk, according to the SF Chronicle. The railing was retrofitted, and 12,000 thinner pillars replaced the original wider ones to make it safer in high winds. But the sound can be heard as far away as Daly City, 10 miles south of San Francisco, the newspaper said. Some complained that it affects their sleep. So as the saying now goes in San Francisco, the show ain't over till the Golden Gate sings. A Golden Gate Bridge spokesman says they're working on a solution, but it's tricky because they want to address the issue without sacrificing the structural integrity of the bridge. The spokesman said he can't provide further details until summer. Jason Blair, NTD News, California.
California has some really good news. Their largest skate park reopened today. NTD's Eileen Ng has more on the ground.
San Jose's Lake Cunningham Action Sports Park has officially reopened after closing last March due to the pandemic. Guests may now use the 68,000-square-foot facility on skateboards, scooters, and bikes.
We have quarter pipes, we have the vert wall, we have the long tunnel. Everything's up for use.
Bikers can try the seven diverse riding zones to challenge themselves in an 8.5-acre bike park.
This is a world-class facility that's been skated by legends like Tony Hawk, Steve Alba, Anthony... Oh, Andrew Reynolds. So who wouldn't want to skate here? It's the largest skate park in California.
Local residents arrived on time at noon.
I'm a little nervous coming back. It's been a while since I've been here, but I'm feeling pretty confident. So yeah, I just got to get the jitters out, but I'm excited. It's finally opening. I want to skate again.
We haven't been in a year, and we missed it a lot, and the kids have been dying to come. There's not really any place close to us that has... I mean, this facility is one of a kind, so it's great to be able to get out and get exercise.
It feels good to be skating again, thank you. It's been empty for like about a year now, so I like skating here.
Guests are required to bring their own safety gear, like helmets, knee pads, and elbow pads. All visitors must have a membership to make a reservation in advance. People will still need to wear masks and social distance at the facility. Eileen Ng, NTD News, California.
A unique dumpling restaurant in Manhattan's East Village neighborhood finally opened its doors today after a year of delay. People formed long lines to get in on opening day. NTD's Ariane Pazdar met with the owner and e-her customers.
So as of today, New York City is pretty much fully reopened. So if you're thinking about coming to visit the city, you might want to visit this dumpling shop right here. Not only is the whole procedure of how you order the food very special, because it's very futuristic, and unlike other kitchens, you can also see the food being made right in front of your eyes. So that's one thing. But on top of that, even the dumplings themselves are unlike no other place. Check it out.
Deli sandwiches, like pastrami, bacon cheeseburger, lamb gyro, even French onion soup into a traditional dumpling. Hence, I have all the Chinese chefs here. I'm the Greek. We put it all together.
The restaurant will be open 24/7, and the entire process from starting the order to picking up the food is done with a special contactless system, similar to the automat concept, which first started decades ago in fast-food chains. The owner walked us through the process.
You can scan this and use your phone as a remote control, staying true to contactless. So basically, I ordered this for you. You know what? You mentioned the dessert dumplings. Let's do a dessert dumpling.
The main dish can be topped off with dessert dumplings, which come in all kinds of flavors, like cinnamon saffron, warm Nutella, fried banana, and more. And those even come with ice cream on top. After paying, you just hold the receipt up to a barcode scanner. Once the food is ready, you will get it from one of the lockers, which have built-in heaters. People stood in line to finally try the crazy dumplings.
I've been waiting for about a year and very proud that it was actually the first dumpling to be purchased from this establishment, so holding it to a high standard.
All right, do you want to try it right now?
Yeah, let's try it. On the record. It was worth the wait.
The restaurant's kitchen has the capacity to make 30,000 dumplings an hour, and they are planning to get there one day. Just like most places in the city, this place now also has an alternating structure, which in my opinion is pretty nice on a hot day like this. Ariane Pazdar, NTD News, New York.
One of the biggest things safety experts worry about is, on highways, is drivers falling asleep behind the wheel. That's even easier to do when your car can drive itself. Police in Wisconsin pulled over an Illinois man near the border between the states after spotting him sleeping while his Tesla was on autopilot.
He was totally sleeping, totally. Perfect. You were sleeping. You were totally like this in the car. Why would we drive like that?
I was okay.
No, you were sleeping.
I was a little bit tired.
No, you were sleeping, sir. I was upside of you. I was looking at you, and you were doing this. Your eyes were closed. So I know, I understand you have autopilot, but if something was to happen, you're not able to make that conscious decision to stop in a hurry.
According to police, a deputy followed the vehicle for two miles with lights and sirens activated before the man realized he was being followed. The driver claimed he was on his way to work at the time. He was given a ticket for inattentive driving, and officers also discovered he had two prior incidents where drivers called police after seeing him sleeping behind the wheel last year. And engineers are preparing the James Webb Space Telescope for launch. The craft will serve as the next-generation Hubble telescope and is designed to peer farther into space than ever before. NTD's Andrew Thomas has the story.
The James Webb Space Telescope is preparing for its trip into space. It's set for launch on October 31st. In a virtual briefing Tuesday, officials from NASA and aerospace company Northrop Grumman discuss the significance of the launch and of deploying the spacecraft's mirror wing. That's a tool to help it better observe space.
Building a Swiss watch that's 40 feet tall and 80 feet long and 40 feet wide, right, and getting it ready for, you know, this journey that we take into vacuum, minus 400 degrees Fahrenheit, four times further than the moon, right, to deploy this mirror.
Webb is NASA's successor to the Hubble Space Telescope. It's designed to peer farther into space and further back in time than any other spacecraft before it. The telescope's launch has faced countless delays. It was originally supposed to fly more than a decade ago. Last July, officials delayed the launch to October 2021 due to the pandemic and technical issues.
Webb's giant mirror and infrared coverage will let scientists probe atmospheres of exoplanets to look for water, carbon dioxide, methane, and other compounds that could indicate habitability. In other words, exploring the atmospheres of worlds that could host life.
Webb will be shipped from California to the launch site in French Guiana in late August. Webb is destined for a point located 1 million miles from Earth, well beyond astronauts' reach. The orbiting Hubble telescope was repeatedly serviced by shuttle astronauts following its 1990 launch. Andrew Thomas, NTD News.
Coming up, is Apple kowtowing to Beijing? The company will soon store some users' data with a company owned by the Chinese regime. And a nearly 1,200-foot skyscraper in China has sent residents and bystanders packing after it started shaking. No high winds or earthquakes have been reported in the area, and authorities can't seem to agree on the cause. Find out more in just a minute here on NTD News. Apple will soon be storing the data of its Chinese users with a company owned by the Chinese regime. The move is raising questions about whether the data will be safe. NTD's Patrick Hayden has those details.
Apple, the self-styled privacy advocate, has been giving in to the demands of the Chinese regime. The New York Times published an exposé about it Monday. The report says Apple is preparing to store its Chinese customer data at a center run by a Chinese state-owned company. Last year, Apple transferred legal ownership of its Chinese user data to Guizhou Cloud Big Data. The report says the Chinese regime forced Apple to abandon the encryption technology it uses everywhere else and store the digital keys that unlock the information in the same center. With the keys in China, too, it likely means the Chinese Communist Party will be able to access the data, a regime that excessively monitors and persecutes dissidents and defenders of human rights. Apple claims it doesn't compromise user security in China or anywhere else. The report also found the iPhone maker is aggressively censoring apps to avoid upsetting Chinese regulators. Apple is expected to start storing its Chinese data in the new data centers in June. Patrick Hayden, NTD News.
A new report is saying that many third-world countries are welcoming Chinese telecom giant Huawei's technology into their government operations. Most of these developing nations are located in Africa, Asia, Europe, Latin America, and the Middle East. NTD's Tiffany Meyer has more.
Beijing is known to work with a number of developing countries, providing technology and cloud services for many of them. But one think tank is urging the U.S. to compete with Communist China in that international tech sector before it's too late. This week, Washington-based research agency CSIS published a report on Chinese tech company Huawei's strategy. The report explains many third-world countries are welcoming Huawei cloud technology into their government operations. That says more developed countries reject the Chinese giant from their 5G networks. Most of these still-developing nations are located in Africa, Asia, Europe, Latin America, and the Middle East. Huawei is subject to less scrutiny there, and these economies have fewer barriers to entry. By using Huawei's cloud computing services, these nations are giving the company access to sensitive data, including information on citizens' health, taxes, and legal records. Cloud computing is a modern way of accessing computer software and hardware. It means that instead of having all that information stored on a desktop or local network, a separate company delivers them straight to users over the internet. That way, businesses only need to pay for what they need and when they need it. For many companies, the strategy can provide a more cost-effective option. But there is a major drawback. These services might allow Huawei to collect the intelligence it processes and use it to benefit the Chinese Communist Party. Washington has repeatedly accused the Chinese tech giant of spying for Beijing. It claims the company exploits backdoors it creates in its telecom equipment. Documents say Huawei has already made dozens of deals with over 40 foreign governments or state-owned companies. But those figures may only be the tip of the iceberg. That's because other international agreements have likely been formed quietly without public announcement. The CSIS suggests the third-world countries will soon start playing a much larger role in global networks. Because of that, it is urging the U.S. to take action. The U.S. is able to compete with Huawei's cloud services thanks to its cutting-edge technology. But to win the competition, America will need to make its products more available to the infrastructure in developing countries. A skyscraper in southern China is giving locals a scare this week after it started swaying and shaking on Tuesday and continued into Wednesday. Despite its movements, there are no reports of strong winds in the area. Eyewitness video shows crowds flooding onto the streets after fleeing the building. The tremors send both residents and bystanders running. Antennas on top of the building were spotted shaking violently as the building moved. While clips captured inside the structure show furniture and other items shaking as if during an earthquake, yet the city also remains free of seismic activity. It is unclear what's caused the 73-story building's tremors. The tower stands nearly 1,200 feet tall and is 20 years old. Local construction standards allow for a certain level of horizontal movement in skyscrapers, but this case appears well beyond normal limits. Chinese experts discovered the building wasn't actually swinging left and right, but instead jumping up and down. Some have suggested possible reasons for the movement, like subways traveling underground beneath the building or sudden temperature increases in recent days, but many aren't convinced. As experts are left grappling for an answer, a 20-year-old master's thesis from one Chinese university has resurfaced. It analyzes the building's construction. The research paper points out that construction work had already started on the building before its design blueprints were fully complete. Problems resulting from the poor pre-planning started showing later, like excessive vibration of the roof antennas. But the issue wasn't found until after the roof had already been sealed, so the antennas were sawn off and later patched.
And coming next, cafes and restaurant terraces are now open in France. The French are enjoying lunch at their local eateries and making up for lost time. That and more on NTD News.
Hi, folks. Joe Namath here, and if you're on Medicare, this is important. You're now entitled to eliminate co-pays and get dental care, dentures, eyeglasses, prescription coverage, in-home aids, unlimited transportation, and home-delivered meals, all at no additional cost. Plus, your zip code may have coverage with the Give Back Benefit that adds money back to your Social Security check every month.
I call to get dental, transportation, meals, and the Give Back Benefit.
With this virus situation, I call to get everything I'm entitled to. I couldn't believe I was missing out on so many benefits.
With the uncertainty of the virus, you need to get everything you're entitled to. Millions of people have trusted the Medicare coverage helpline. You can, too. Call now. It's free.
Call 1-800-764-1930.
The French will get back to their restaurants' terraces after nearly six months of mandatory closure, and some say they will eat at restaurants more often now to make up for the lost time. NTD's David Vives has the story.
Half sunny, half rainy. The unpredictable weather did not stop the French from getting their lunches on restaurant terraces as the national mandatory closure order has been lifted.
We are glad, even if the weather is not perfect. It's so pleasant to take a seat and get a coffee under the sun.
According to a poll, 80% of French people say they will go back to restaurants more often now to make up for the lost time.
According to APOL, 80% of French people say they will go back to restaurants as usual, and 45% of young people say they will even go more often to make up for the lost time.
I'm so glad this day has finally come, honestly. And it's so close to my birthday, too, so I'm gonna be going out and shopping and everything like you're seeing right now.
The lifted measures seem to be the light at the end of the tunnel for shop and restaurant owners. Many of whom were threatened by bankruptcy. The closures severely impacted the restaurants and shops on the avenue, some of which were at the brink of going out of business. According to Edouard LeFebvre, the managing director of the Champs-Élysées Comedy, bar owners are impatient for the city to fully open.
We waited for so long. Cafes were forbidden to work for like five, six months. Of course, there's the business problem, although the money problem. But most of them, they are sad not to do their job, you know? Doing your job is a reason why you woke up in the morning, and they lost this. And today, it's starting again.
Restaurants will fully reopen on June 9th with a limited number of seats indoors. David Vives, NTD News, Paris.
A small city in southern Sweden is adopting different ways of going green. Recently, one of the world's largest furniture retailers stepped up to help. NTD's Andrew Thomas has the story.
This mall in Sweden is not your average shopping center. It's home to a recycling center and features shops that only sell second-hand goods. Most come from donations. It opened in 2015, and now you can even find IKEA's famous blue and yellow logo there. Opened less than six months ago, this IKEA store is also unique. The location only sells refurbished IKEA products, already assembled.
The goal is really to learn about how we can take back our own furniture, make them ready for a next life, and then again, find the next customer who can continue loving it.
Initially, the store relied on goods from the city's recycling plant next door to the shopping mall. But soon, the home furniture store had enough demand to start bringing in goods from further away. Customers vary, from thrifters to collectors, seeking pieces of furniture no longer available in most stores. The oldest item they've had dates back to the 1960s.
IKEA's ambition is to be climate positive in 2030, and to do so, we need to learn a lot, and we need to innovate a lot, and this is one great innovation lab for us to relearn how we can support the proliferation of our products.
A key component of the operation takes place in this back room. There, products are inspected, refurbished, and prepared for sale. Most pieces can be fixed with a deep clean and some polishing, but others need sanding and painting. The goal here isn't to open second-hand IKEA stores worldwide, but instead to integrate sustainability into the retailer's business model. Andrew Thomas, NTD News.
And that's all for today's news. Thanks for tuning in. I'm Stephanie Cox. We have a new channel. Subscribe to us on YouTube at NTD News. Get the highlights of our news broadcast and the most important headlines that we curate especially for you.
Don't miss out on important news. Our videos are being deleted. So if you don't want to be cut off from honest news, take a moment to sign up for our newsletter at newsletter.ntd.com so you don't lose access to NTD. Go to newsletter.ntd.com to sign up for our evening newsletter.